Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you tonight to the third evening of presentations on applications for American Rescue Plan Funds. I'd ask for a motion to reconvene this meeting from Tuesday, December 13th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. So we will continue with the presentations. Before we begin, just a little background information and housekeeping. The City of Urbana has approximately $10 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to allocate for qualified projects. According to federal treasury guidelines, the funds have to be committed by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. The city contracted with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission to help administer the funds, solicit public input, and work with city council and staff to develop a concept plan to identify funding priorities and to guide decisions. The actual application process was opened in mid-September. It closed on November 16th. The city received applications from community organizations and city departments requesting ARPA funds to address the goals in the concept plan. The eligible applications have been reviewed and scored according to a published metric. External applications were scored by city staff. Internal applications were scored by RPC staff. All eligible applicants have been invited to make a brief presentation over these evenings this week. All applicants will have up to 12 minutes for a presentation, and that will follow the same format. The first six minutes of this time focus on responding to questions provided by the city. The second six minutes will be open to Q and A from city council and the mayor. Applicants have also been asked to submit a one-page executive summary to convey key information about the proposed project. Council members have access to the complete applications and project budgets. A couple of housekeeping things. We'll take a 10-minute break after the presentation by Sol La Gracia, so that's after the seventh organization to present. Restrooms are in the lobby. I want to make, let folks know that the city council will be making no funding decisions until after the first of the year at the very earliest. So we will not be taking action on any of these applications before the end of the year. And council members who have questions and want further information about specific projects will be sending that request to Will Kolchowski, staff member, and then he'll be forwarding that on to organizations. So there will be some more opportunity for getting information and for public input as well. I just wanted to thank city staff member, Will Kolchowski, for leading this effort on our end and organizing it just supremely well, and for J.D. McClanahan, and up until recently, Ashley McLaughlin from the Regional Planning Commission. We couldn't have gotten to this point without their assistance. And I thank all of you for caring so much about your community. So, we will get started with the first applicant. When you come up to the table, please state your name very clearly.
Mayor, we need a roll call first.
Oh, sorry. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Thanks, Phyllis. So, when you come up to the table, you can have a maximum of two presenters. Please make sure that the microphone light is on. It should be a bright green light. There's a button on the base of the microphone. And speak closely to the microphone so we can hear you. And please state your name clearly for the record so that we can get it accurately in the minutes. Will will be the timekeeper. He'll hold up a yellow card at 30 seconds before the end of the first six-minute period and 30 seconds before the end of the second six-minute period. So, first up is the Champaign County Environmental Stewards for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Facility.
Good evening. I am Susan Monte, Executive Director of the nonprofit organization Champaign County Environmental Stewards, or CCES. CCES is requesting the amount of $300,000 of ARPA funds from Urbana to use for upfront capital costs to establish a household hazardous waste collection facility in Champaign County. To refer to household hazardous waste in my presentation, I will be using the acronym HHW. CCES was formed in 2019 in part to address a longstanding need to provide for convenient and safe HHW collection options for residents of Champaign County. The CCES project envisioned is to establish a safe and convenient HHW collection facility, open year-round and part-time, to better protect the health and safety of our community. With convenient access to such a facility, lasting impacts of this project are that the following types of real risks can be decreased. And I won't read these through, but you can see these are serious problems. The Mohammed Aquifer Protection Task Force 2018 report identified inadequate or improper HHW management as one of six contamination threats to the water quality of the Mohammed Aquifer. Hazardous chemical material placed or dumped on the ground in a recharge area can potentially whoops, 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 whoops. Now I'm going backwards. I apologize for it. Okay. All right. So, yeah, the Mohammed Aquifer is a primary source of drinking water for more than 500,000 people in 15 counties in Illinois. It provides an estimated 200 million gallons of water per day to communities, ag, industry, and rural wells. The Mohammed Aquifer is a key life-supporting groundwater resource in east-central Illinois. Improving the collection of HHW in the region will be an investment in maintaining the quality of the Mohammed Aquifer. The CCES project to establish an HHW collection facility in central Champaign County is a project in line with the City of Urbana ARPA funding goal to invest in infrastructure to increase community health, safety, and future resilience. The nearest HHW collection facility is a two-and-a-half to three-hour driving distance from Champaign County. A waste planning convenience standard used in Illinois is that traveling more than 40 miles to a facility is inconvenient. The existing option for HHW collection available to Champaign County residents is the Illinois EPA-sponsored one-day HHW collection event held annually in a large parking lot, usually in Champaign, on a Saturday each April, weather permitting. Under the most favorable conditions, the highest participation rate that an annual one-day HHW collection event can accommodate is approximately 1.4% of households in the service area. Estimated participation rates for the 2021 and 2022 one-day IEP A-sponsored HHW collection events held were just over 1% and just under 1% respectively. Waste Facility Consultant Special Waste Associates informs us that an annual participation rate of 10% to 14% represents the desired and effective HHW collection participation rate for households in the Champaign County service area. Providing a year-round convenient HHW collection facility can be a path to reaching a 10% to 14% participation rate. As per federal guidelines, ARPA-eligible costs can be upfront capital costs for this project. These costs include capital campaign costs, project planning costs, site acquisition, permitting, construction, and other capital costs. This July, CCES was granted ARPA funds from Champaign County in the amount of $650,000 for upfront capital costs. The requested $300,000 of Urbana ARPA funds will greatly assist CCES to provide for the project's upfront capital costs. During 2023, CCES plans to hold a broad-based community capital fundraising campaign to secure funds to cover remaining needed upfront capital costs, acquire a suitable land parcel, obtain architectural plans and drawings for a steel frame structure to serve as the collection facility, and apply for local siting approval. Also in 2023, the CCES strategy to secure a long-term support for operational costs will be to reach out to key stakeholders and local government entities to request their annual fair share of support based on the relative population or another reasonable parameter. CCES expects both to commit and to expend the available ARPA funds for project capital costs by December of 2024. CCES will leverage annually appropriated funds from Illinois EPA for transportation and processing of HHW collected at the facility. That Illinois EPA support is expected to be available once the HHW facility is established. During 2025 or sooner, to provide additional convenience to all Champaign County residents, CCES will seek to include a program collection site for the convenient collection of unwanted residential electronics to be located at the HHW collection facility premises. This can represent a cost savings to the county and municipalities that presently support the twice-yearly residential electronics collection events. That ends my part of the presentation.
Okay. We'll move on to questions from council members. We'll start with council member Wu.
Hi, thank you very much. I see in your application that it has $300,000 for professional services and $650,000 to acquire a property, which gives a total of $950,000. Can you clarify that you're receiving, you're requesting $300,000 for professional services?
My request to the Urbana, City of Urbana for ARPA funds is to cover capital costs, which may include site acquisition. It may include, I mean, it will include a variety of costs. I have a list here. It includes pre-planning, land acquisition, industrial structure costs, architectural or engineering plans, site improvement plans, building permit review and fees, other capital costs such as legal fees, insurance, finance, and inspections, facility equipment, site furnishing, signage, and security systems.
Thank you.
To piggyback what Mary Alice was talking about, so after you get maybe the $300,000, you're still going to need between $1.8 million and $2.3 million more dollars. And you're doing to do that through a community fundraising campaign?
Correct. This February is likely the launch of that capital campaign. We're in the pre-planning and feasibility stage of that campaign.
So do you already have a site where you think that this hazardous waste collection will go?
There are very carefully identified parameters by the Illinois EPA for where this kind of a site can go. It's a pollution control facility, and it's subject to those requirements. I have my eye, or we have our eye on one site that is five acres in an ideal location. But we may not need five acres. I mean, that's one potential site that's out there on North Lincoln, actually, not far from the transfer station. So that would be a suitable site, for example. We're not committed to that site, but that's just one example of a suitable site. We had been looking at facilities that were existing, but our architect consultant has advised us against purchasing a wood-frame facility that would require much retrofitting to be fire-safe. So we're carefully considering what we need and what we will get.
Thank you. Do you want, assuming you build this facility, I was curious how this would be sustained, particularly what region this will serve and how you intend to proportionately share the costs of operation for this facility?
Okay, well, the facility, since it will be subsidized by the Illinois EPA for transportation and processing costs for all HHW collected from residents, will be open to all Illinois residents. It will primarily serve households in a 40-mile radius typically is what we would expect. But it's not abnormal for someone in Illinois to desperately seek out a permanent collection site because there are so few in the central part of the state. So, for example, I know people that drive to Naperville or down to St. Louis area. I mean, it's totally inconvenient, but it is a problem. When you need to move and you have a garage full of stuff and you don't have anything to do with it and you want to be responsible, you have to seek out one of these permanent collection sites, which mostly are located in northern Illinois.
Just to piggyback off of the mayor's question, you said something about cost sharing within the local municipalities, though?
Right. So, the ARPA funds are requested for capital costs. There are also operational costs that need to be met. And those, our strategy for that is to ask each local government in Champaign County and surrounding areas to contribute their fair share portion based on reasonable parameters such as population, relative population. We are planning to include in our capital campaign a subsidy for the first three years of operational costs to allow us time to really efficiently gauge operation costs and get them to where they need to be, since we haven't done this before and we're working with estimates based on existing facilities in northern Illinois. So.
And you mentioned a subsidy by the EPA. Is that already promised or promised? And is that every year?
Yes. In 2021, I was on a task force, and I was able to convince the Illinois EPA Facilities Manager, I mean, for this program, for Waste Facilities Management, to include annual appropriations for the next five household hazardous waste collection facilities that are developed, newly established. And so, those subsidies are provided to the four existing ones in northern Illinois and to the one new one in Madison County down in the southwest portion of the state. And so, Illinois EPA will commit to providing $275,000 each year to support the transportation and processing costs for HHW materials collected at the first, next five facilities planned in the state. And we are right at the forefront of being number one or two. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there will be questions, and we'll send them in for further pursuing those. Okay, next organization to present is Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, solving the talent attraction equation in Champaign County.
All right. Good evening. Carly McCory McKay.
And Terry Reevesek.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about our proposal for a talent attraction project through a community job application. So, I'm here representing the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, and Terry is representing VCC Visit Champaign County. So, in general, in the age of talent wars, it's really important that our communities stay on the cutting edge of the ability to attract talent. And so, over the past several years, our two organizations have been coming together to work on both talent retention and attraction strategies. For the proposal that we are talking about tonight, we believe that this is a real sustainable and unique solution via the development of a community job application. So, it's probably no surprise to anybody in this room that businesses, small and large businesses in the community have obviously been negatively impacted by the pandemic, but they've also had challenges in being able to fill jobs. So we believe that this solution will help with job placement opportunities, which is definitely one of the ARPA goals, but also provide relief and support for our local businesses. In addition, this opportunity also creates an opportunity to promote our community as a destination to live and work while also retaining residents and ultimately growing our population.
So, the community job application is planned to be launched in early 2023, and it focuses on three short steps to make it a low-barriered access for people to utilize this program to get placed within the community. The first step is just filling out basic information of who you are, and are you currently a resident of the community, or are you interested in coming here? And if so, what is your timeline for moving to the area? The second step is the opportunity to showcase what you're looking for in a job. What industry are you interested in? What is your job level? And then you can upload your resume. And the final step is inquiring about what the community has to offer. Perhaps it's volunteer opportunities, family-friendly activities, outdoor recreation, but just letting us know what is most important to you in the community. The data is then aggregated from this three simple steps into what we're calling the talent roster, which will then help us deliver those leads directly to our employers based on what industry they serve, helping them take those individuals and place them into jobs that they have existing. This will not replace the hiring process of those particular employers. It will just give them leads from people that are already interested in working in that sector in our community. And it will finally also feed directly into the Chambana Welcome Crew, which has already helped place 50 people in the community and helped them engage from the moment they've gotten here. The community job application also has the opportunity to work for specific sectors. So if there is something within the community where we have a specific need, for example, RNs, we can work specifically with our hospital systems and our medical facilities to do an application that is directly for what they are looking for. We anticipate this project is going to be a one-time funding need because after several years of proven results with our employers, we anticipate buy-in from the private sector. They will be the ones primarily benefiting from this, getting leads directly to fill those jobs. However, this will be a tremendous benefit for people that are seeking jobs in the community. It gives them a low barrier to access where they simply fill out the form, and then they are contacted directly by employers here in the community that are looking to fill jobs, quality jobs, that will get people invested in the community. Furthermore, this process will help connect people to the Welcome Crew and get them engaged in the community from day one, which helps keep them in the community, which means we will have less jobs to fill down the road. As part of this process, we've outlined a number of goals that we anticipate meeting within our first year. If it goes anything like our other programs have gone so far, we anticipate exceeding these goals. But they include placing people in jobs successfully and also getting them integrated in the community by helping them connect with our community ambassadors and the Welcome Crew, but also attending our new-to-CU mixers where they're able to connect with other people. The whole project as a whole wraps in collectively to get people further integrated into this community.
So, why utilize ARPA funds to do this project? We believe that this will assist with existing and potential residents to not only find the jobs that they need, but to feel comfortable when they come to this community. It provides them connections to well-paying opportunities, and ultimately, it helps all of our local employers by getting them access to the much-needed talent that they have a need for, providing better opportunities for the companies to succeed and potentially grow here in the community. And as far as the ability to utilize these federal funds, both of our organizations have extensive grant management experience, both at the local, state, and the federal level, and particularly from the EDC. We manage several grants through our office, including the Illinois Small Business Development Center and recent grants through DCEO, including CARES Funding and RISE. How all of this works together? It's really important, and for anything like this to work, you have to have critical infrastructure in place that you utilize. As Terry mentioned, we will rely on the Champaign County Recruiters Network, which has over 150 area employers engaged, from our biggest employers to some of our smallest employers, so that they can have access to all of these tools and resources. And just to give you an idea, here's a timeline of some of the projects that we've really been focused on and have been launching since fall of 2019 to date, with the hopes of rolling out the community job application in early 2023, along with the new Champaign-Urbana Community Job Board. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the questions. We'll begin with Chris.
So, will the emphasis be, I mean, you included Urbana as part of this and retaining talent. So, would the emphasis be on our residents already here, or 50/50 of attracting new talent from elsewhere? I mean, how do you see this split?
It's a mixture of both. So, we certainly have situations where people who are already here in the community might be seeking new opportunities, or maybe they came as a trailing significant other, didn't want an opportunity at first, but now they're seeking some types of employment. So that is certainly something that happens quite frequently already. Then, there's, of course, the opportunity to attract a lot of new talent to the community as well. Our organizations each already do a significant amount of just general community marketing to bring not only visitors to the community through VCC, but also bring new companies and frankly, just talent here to the community. So this really will get interwoven into existing campaigns that we have to provide a source for all of these leads, for them to have the ability to take the next step. We each source leads for different purposes, but this will funnel people directly into one particular source that then we can deliver on a weekly basis to all of our employers. So, and I think it's important, too, to reiterate what Terry said, that this is not meant to replace existing hiring practices and policies that companies have, because we know that they have them for a reason and they can be very different. This is really to add to their ability and frankly, just give them a lot of leads on a weekly basis so that they can find the talent that they really critically need.
So when you, I guess you're done. When you have your website up, okay, this will basically kind of be, I'm trying to think of something comparable like Indeed or something like that, but basically for Urbana or the CU area, okay? And the other, what I want to know is, I know different entities, agencies, they put out their job thing. Well, how will you, how will you include that? How will you make it so that there's not a cross, you know, wires getting crossed?
So, everything that we've launched to date, the Chambana Welcome Crew, it's all living on the website, You'reWelcomeCU.com, which is also where the current job board exists, but it's also where the new job board that's getting ready to launch will live. The new job board aggregates any employer who wishes to participate and showcases all of the jobs. So it's very specific to our local companies, and all of this will live within the You're Welcome CU website. And it'll all integrate together on the back end, which is part of the management of the intake forms and making sure that the process is super smooth for those who are filling out any of this information. And then we do the work to get them connected based on their responses. So that might be a connection to an ambassador in the Welcome Crew. It might be inviting them to an upcoming event, and then, of course, directing them to the job board, but specifically honing in either on their interests or their skillsets based on the information that they provided through the application or through the resume that they provide.
So the pandemic hit certain sectors harder than others, like the hospitality industry and certain groups of people, like lower-income people of color, harder than others. So how, will you be curating this project to focus on those particular sectors? Or is there a way to do that?
There is a way to do it specifically on sector. So we could, hospitality, for example, run a program and a marketing campaign strictly on trying to boost up our hospitality sector here and do marketing strict, and direct them to a specific form that's designed just for them. We could also really do that with any of our demographic information and any of our interest information as well. It's very easy to customize.
We know that there are certain types of jobs in the community, right, that are a really critical need. When you look at particular sectors like RNs and healthcare, or maybe software developers in tech, or certainly those who work in the retail and hospitality sector. We have the ability with all of these tools to really hone in and run unique campaigns, not only to source leads, but we also have the ability with all these new functions to be able to track so that we're seeing on the back end what's actually working, who's clicking, and that will help us adjust in future years where we need to maybe switch up some of our marketing efforts to ensure that we're continuously increasing some of those numbers and those results.
Okay, thanks.
You mentioned that there's going to be a cost associated with it in the future for the users. Can you talk about how it would be accessible to smaller organizations and nonprofits?
There is no cost right now. Our hope is, once we have it launched, that we will have some of our largest employers who are benefiting the most help us offset some of our operating costs.
The costs that we're seeking right now are for the infrastructure and for marketing campaigns. It is our goal to keep this free, and all of the programs that we've mentioned, the Welcome Crew, the mixers, all of those are free for local employers to access and utilize, and for anybody that interacts from a talent perspective, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Eastern Illinois Food Bank Electric Cargo Vans and Charging Station.
Hi. My name is Amanda Borden. I'm the Vice President of Development.
And my name is Randy Stone. I'm the Vice President of Operations.
First of all, thank you, Mayor Marlin, and the members of the city council for this opportunity. So, Eastern Illinois Food Bank is requesting funding for two electric cargo vans and an onsite electric charging station. So first of all, just to give an overview of the impacts that Eastern Illinois Food Bank has on the community, last year, we distributed 8 million pounds of food, which included 1 million pounds of fresh produce throughout. which included 1 million pounds of fresh produce throughout the 18 counties that we serve in east-central Illinois. So that is equivalent of 6.5 million meals for our neighbors facing food insecurity. Locally, we serve 118,000 people, unique individual, unduplicated people throughout our 18 counties. However, 21% of those people are Urbana residents. So there is a high proportion of the impact that's right here in Urbana. Last year, our fleet of trucks traveled 180,000 miles to deliver and pick up food. That's equivalent of seven times around the world, and it is very costly, and our trucks are big box trucks that require a CDL license. Funding from this grant will allow us to make transformational change to our pickup and delivery system. The two electric cargo vans and the electric charging station will allow us to add an additional 80 pickup and delivery events to our current schedule each week, which means more food that's being rescued, so it's not being wasted, and more food that's getting delivered, so that it can get into the communities of the people who need it. And also, like I mentioned, these vans do not require a CDL license, so they can be driven by volunteers, so we can get these into the rotation immediately. It also means that we'll be able to reduce our carbon footprints and serve our community in a more sustainable way. We feel that this is a good fit for the city of Urbana's ARPA funding goals, because first of all, we'd be able to make transformational change to our pickup and delivery system, and be able to increase the amount of food that's given to our neighbors and reduce our carbon footprints. And also because, like I mentioned, Urbana residents make up a high proportion of the people that we serve in our service area. We know that the poverty level in Urbana is nearly 30%, so we know that there is a high need locally for Urbana residents. We also, one of our goals is to distribute more fresh produce. The more efficiently that we're able to do that, the more food that we're able to save with produce. It has a very quick turnaround time, so the faster we can get that food picked up and delivered, the more healthy nutritious food we're being able to place into the hands of our neighbors. And also, this project will help the sustainability. Right now, we want to try to eliminate our dependence on fuel, to provide a more sustainable way to serve our neighbors. And also, this would meet the funding goal of the council of using the ARPA funds to increase food accessibility to the community. We're confident that we can follow the federal guidelines. Eastern Illinois Food Bank also has extensive grant management experience, and we will be able to use the funds to immediately purchase the vans, so all the costs will be one-time upfront, and we can have immediate impact in our delivery and pickup system, adding 80 pickup and delivery events a week. Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin with questions. Sharice.
I'm trying to get my questions together. One thing I wanted to know is, if we are not able to give you the 133,000, would, how would, would you be able to, you know, what's your low point? What could you suffice, what could you work with? Let me put it that way.
Well, let me answer that. That's for two vehicles, and obviously, one would make a tremendous impact within the community here in Urbana. And the prices are going up on the electrical vehicles right now, and you're probably looking about 85 to 90,000.
Okay, thank you.
That sort of answered the question I had, is how much will the vans cost and how much will it cost to install a charging station? I couldn't find that in the.
Charging stations are running about $4,000 right now, and vans on the low end are Ford vans, and they're in the 75 to 80,000 range, all the way up to E. The Lightning E is about 147,000, and the new Amazon vans, which are the Ravine, are running about 120.
So when you're saying 75,000 each?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So the 133,000 requested, that is, that doesn't sound like it's enough to buy two vans and a charging station. What is it supposed to buy?
It is enough to buy two Ford vans and a charging station. The quote that was given back at the beginning of this project, it would cover that.
Okay, thank you.
From that manufacturer.
If memory serves, that you provide food to food pantries. Can you let me know how many food pantries in Urbana you provide food to?
Yes. Oh shoot, I can't go online, okay. I don't have that number. I can provide you with that information. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we do have several partners that we work with in Urbana. Most of our partners in Champaign County are located in Urbana.
Thank you.
I appreciate you going to electric, but my concern would be, are there other charging stations in town that you could use? And what I'm suggesting is, is that how far would your van, these two new vans, be able to go, and would they have to stay in the metro area?
Well, the vans themselves right now are, a Ford van with a gross weight of about 11,000 pounds runs about 90 miles per charge. And charging stations at any dealership, they also, you see Casey's is now putting them in at their gas stations, and they make an adapter plug. It's just like anything else, you can charge there, it's $15 for a 20-minute charge.
And you guys are located across 74, off of Lincoln or?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I think the question I wanted to understand, I wanted to know too, is with, you say you supply other food banks in the area? Will your vans or will these vans ever be able to be used to go through the 18 other counties that you service as well?
If we have the ability to fulfill the need here in Urbana, we wouldn't just let them set. We would continue to support, you know, Champaign County and anything in the area, but there's such a need right now, especially in the senior segment. We need better penetration, we need to get closer, the mobility of seniors has been becoming limited, the rural area is untapped. There's so many places, and we have so many models that we would use this van for, I would think it would almost be exclusively here in Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, the 25,000 people served, they're unduplicated, and are those people within the corporate city limits, or is that anyone with an Urbana address?
Anybody with an Urbana zip code.
So that would be outside the city corporate limits as well?
Yes, it could include that as well, yes.
County, okay. Thank you.
So you said it could go 90 miles per charge. How long does it take to charge?
About 20 minutes for an 85% charge, and about 30 for 100%.
Just thank you for the presentation. Appreciate what you're doing, and I guess we have a second for all the presenters tonight. Don't have time to thank everyone, but thank you all for your participation. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next presentation is from Champaign County Healthcare Consumers Special Populations Outreach and Enrollment for Health, Food, and Housing Security.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lenhoff, and I'm the Executive Director of the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers. And the project for which we are applying would be a project that would allow us to serve low-income seniors in Urbana, low-income immigrants, and low-income or no-income people with disabilities who need help applying for social security disability. And before I get further into the presentation.
Just a quick, my name is Ricardo Diaz, and I'm the Treasurer of the Board.
Thank you. Okay, so the lasting impact of this project after the funds run out, first of all, most Urbana residents who would be beneficiaries of the project, of the program, and then the benefits, the public benefits that we are able to help them get, they would have these benefits permanently or on an ongoing basis, and we would help them maintain them for as long as they need them. We're talking about benefits besides social security disability. There are a lot of seniors who qualify for programs that would help them financially that they don't know about, programs like Medicare Savings, Medicare Extra Help, SNAP, LIHEAP, programs like that, that would really help reduce their costs of living out of pocket. By adding staff who specialize in these human services, healthcare consumers will have strengthened our capacity to serve Urbana residents with these specialized services. Also, health disparities, income disparities, income insecurity, and housing insecurities would be reduced among the vulnerable special populations served by this project, as they would get more resources behind them to make their lives easier and more affordable. This would be a great use of the city ARPA funds, because there are too many public benefits that can help improve food security, access to and affordability of healthcare, including mental health, and financial security, and these are vastly underutilized by vulnerable populations. This project would address the under-enrollment and critical public benefits. There is too much money that could help people that is being left on the table right now. This project would be a significant investment in and improve the community health, and would improve the resilience of the affected individuals and the community. By helping seniors, people with disabilities, and immigrants with benefits that make food, healthcare, utilities, et cetera, more affordable, and bringing a source of income to people with disabilities, vulnerable people will have greater financial security and will be less likely to be destabilized and at risk of homelessness. We are confident that we can use these funds in accordance with federal guidelines within the timeframe, because we have experience and specialized knowledge and skills in helping people apply for the public benefit programs discussed. And we also have an excellent client tracking system that allows us to demonstrate the benefits of our work, and to track the applications and the approvals that our clients get for the various different programs. And we also have experience managing federal funds past, that we've gotten from local government agencies and also directly from the federal government. And I think that's all, right? Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to questions. I know. How will, you say you're going to add staff, so how many staff are you going to add, and how will that enhance efforts already being made by public house, by the townships, by RPC, by all the other social service agencies that help people navigate the programs at this point?
Yes, we would be proposing to add three staff. Each would specialize with a particular population. So, for example, applying for social security disability is highly, highly specialized, very time-consuming, and even though there's a couple of us doing that right now, we do not have enough staff to meet the need even just in the city of Urbana. In fact, we get a lot of referrals from township to do the disability applications. We just do not have enough staff to do that. Then with regard to the other services, we are the only organization in Champaign County that does enrollment in all forms of health insurance. So for example, there are some organizations that can help with Medicaid, but they do not often help with Marketplace or with Medicare. And then when you start talking about low-income seniors who can qualify for both Medicare and Medicaid, it can get complicated. So we would not be duplicating any work that is already being done, except for by our own organization, which doesn't have enough capacity to meet all the need that there is in Urbana. We take referrals from all the organizations that you have mentioned, and one of the good things about healthcare consumers is that if we get a referral for a special, a particular need, for example, a disability application, but we find out that the person actually could also qualify for food stamps, or LIHEAP, or Medicaid, or all of that, we can, with our staff, help round out all of those services, so the person wouldn't have to go to multiple agencies to be served.
Okay, thank you.
With that need for the expansion in mind, what would be the plan for maintaining those staff positions long-term?
Yeah, so what we would hope is that if we are awarded some funding and we bring on staff to do this, we would use the time that we are funded to develop other funding sources to help support this. We do have a track record of maintaining our staff. Most of our staff have been with us at least eight years. So sometimes somebody comes on because of a grant-funded position, their work is valuable, and that's demonstrable, and then we are able to attract additional funding.
So you wrote that they will be outreach and enrollment community health workers, and so would these community health workers be certified, or are you just calling them community health workers? Would they be like, under the Illinois certification of community health workers? And would you be training them?
Yes, we would be training them. We helped actually inform that certification process. So, but we have used that term long before the certification process actually got started, but we would be doing the training. There would be some certifications, including for certain application for public benefits. For example, if you are applying people for certain kinds of benefits, you have to get certified for those specific ones, so we would work to get people trained up and certified.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I missed it. If you could clarify, number of staff over what time period?
So the proposal that we submitted would allow us to hire three staff members. They would specialize across the different populations, and then I believe it would be for, depending when the funding would start, for '23, '24, '25, and funds have to be expended by '26, right? So three to four years.
So you serve the whole county. Can you share with us kind of how, what proportion of your people that you serve come from Urbana?
Yes, the proportion right now is about 40% or a little bit higher, and that has, if you had asked me that about three or four years ago, it would have been a smaller proportion. However, because we work so closely with Cunningham Township and also the organizations that serve immigrants in this community, our proportion of Urbana residents has increased. And also for this particular program, because the rate of poverty is so high in Urbana, we would see adding a lot more Urbana residents to our client base. Thank you.
Since you referenced other organizations that you work with, township and some of the refugee and immigration groups, can you tell me why it's needed to have somebody who specializes in these particular groups?
Yes, I think, well, first of all, in terms of immigrants, you know, there's many different nationalities and languages. We have a very strong capacity for Spanish language. We might be seeking to hire somebody with other language capacities, but it's easier if the people can speak the language rather than relying on an interpreter, for example. And then with the disability issues, application for social security disability, whether SSI or SSDI, is incredibly, incredibly complicated and daunting, and the very people who need it the most are often the least able to do it themselves. And the more you do these applications, the better you get at them. It's specialized knowledge. And then for serving seniors, there are a lot of complicated rules around seniors because of retirement income and other things like that. So understanding what those are for like, the different Medicare savings programs, like Quimby and Slimby and things like that, it really does help if somebody has that specialized knowledge and that experience.
Thank you.
Claudia, what is the relationship with the Champaign County Mental Health Board? Are they going to be helping you? Are they going to be helping you or can they help you? I mean, where do they fit in all this?
Yes, thank you for asking that. We do actually get funding from the Champaign County Mental Health Board, and one of our more recent grants is for assisting with disability applications. But because the funding comes from the Mental Health Board, it's for anyone in the county as long as it's within the behavioral health, you know, framework. There are a lot of people who have non-mental health disabling conditions, and so this would expand our capacity to serve Urbana residents all the way around regardless of what their disabling conditions are.
If I can just augment for the question from Mary Alice and both Chris. For those who haven't worked with CCH, the kinds of applications that one needs to fill to get services, especially on the health side when, when the open market, it's just, they're tough to fill out. There's a lot of decisions to be made. Last year, we gained access, for example, for older immigrants to be able to, to get Medicaid in, in the state of Illinois. Imagine yourself not with a language, never had services, and it's just really tough. And the handholding that goes here, goes on here is just...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you. Next up is Common Ground Food Co-op, Common Ground Food for All Accessibility Program.
Hello, my name is Liz Sands. Thank you so much for having me here. I am the Outreach Coordinator for Common Ground Food Co-op. A Common Ground is a cooperatively run grocery store owned by over 9,000 Champaign-Urbana neighbors. Our mission is to be the center of a vibrant, inclusive community, to serve as an educational resource on food issues and to ensure that our local food system is equitable, robust, and environmentally sound. We are requesting ARPA funds to support our existing food accessibility and food discount program, Food for All, which provides a 10% discount on our entire produce section and grocery pantry staples to hundreds of local neighbors who are low income and experiencing food insecurity. Common Ground also covers the full equity grant, a one-time $60 investment for Food for All members, so they can receive all the additional benefits of co-op ownership. In keeping with our mission, we want all of our customers to be able to access healthy and local food at an affordable price. Starting with the question about the lasting impact of the project, so Food for All, sorry, Food for All is an existing program that has had great success and has steadily increased in the last few years. This graph shows the increase in total Food for All members over the last five years. And as you can see, this past year has shown the highest growth rate yet, jumping from 396 total members in 2021 to 574 total members in 2022. As of last year, we'll probably get a few more by the end of the year. The second graph shows the increase in the total dollar amount of discount usage in the last five years. Total discounts have jumped from around $11,000 in 2020 to almost $19,000 this year. It's also worth noting the increase in EBT dollars spent as many of our Food for All members utilize EBT to purchase food at Common Ground. EBT usage has skyrocketed, nearly doubling from 2020 to 2021 and holding steady throughout 2022. Taking into consideration current trends in the grocery industry such as inflation and supply chain disruption, we expect both Food for All membership and discount usage to continue to grow. If granted ARPA funds, we'll be able to cushion our budget for this program at its current capacity without potentially having to limit new applicants. The lasting impact will be that hundreds of local residents have increased access to healthy and locally grown food. Food for All is a great way to introduce people to Common Ground and all that we have to offer, being part of a cooperative community, learning about and experiencing locally grown food, and having access to various cultural and educational events that take place in our store. Through Common Ground, our members are able to strengthen their relationships to local farmers, local organizations, and community projects. The long-term plan is to see Food for All continue to grow and expand, and our hope is that we're able to do this without having to limit the number of members we can accept into the program. ARPA funds will help us reach more people and increase food accessibility to our members. To answer the next question about why our project will be the best use of ARPA funds, we strongly believe that our Food for All program addresses two of the Urbana ARPA goals, to increase availability and affordability of food and to provide relief and support for local businesses. In 2021, Common Ground sold just shy of $1 million in local products, which provided economic support to many small local businesses, all of which are located within 100 miles of Urbana. By providing a reliable outlet for farmers and producers to sell their products, we're helping build infrastructure and increasing the availability of locally grown food. Our produce department prioritizes sourcing from local farms, and the 10% Food for All discount on our produce allows members increased access to this food. The result is mutually beneficial, providing affordable local produce to our customers while supporting our local farmers. We believe that Common Ground is an important local institution, much more than just a grocery store. But because we're a small business and because we prioritize local and organic products, it can be hard to compete with the prices of larger grocery chains. Food for All allows members to shop our entire produce department and our grocery pantry staples at a discounted price. The Ownership Equity Grant also gives them access to additional savings such as owner-only deals, bulk discounts, a loyalty program, and quarterly savings during our owner appreciation days. We feel strongly that Food for All is an important program that increases the availability and affordability of food to our members. Finally, I would like to share where we're confident that we can use these funds in accordance with federal guidelines and achieve demonstrable results in the required time. Food for All was developed in 2012 and has been a core facet of our mission since then. Our organization is already set up to handle the mechanics of the program, including promotion, management, and implementation. We are requesting a total of $45,000 in ARPA funds from the city of Urbana to be used over the course of the next three years to supplement the budget for the discount program. Common Ground will continue to handle the equity grant aspect of the program. Currently, we utilize our Internal Roundup for Good grant to bring in money for Food for All, but we're greatly exceeding our budget for the program in just discounts alone. The remaining money comes from our store budget, and we're concerned that the disparity between our budgeted funds for this program and the actual amount of funds distributed will continue to widen. We expect that even with ARPA funds, we will have to supplement funding from our store budget, which we're prepared to do. If granted, our finance, administration, and marketing departments will handle the grant reimbursement and reporting. We will continue to promote Food for All to get new members and provide information to those who are interested in applying. We do this by providing written information in the store and online, as well as sharing this with a number of organizations and attending community events. We have already accepted 178 new Food for All members this year and are confident that those numbers will continue to increase. Food for All has proven to be a successful program and supports so many people in our community. We are hopeful that we'll be able to continue this program at its current capacity and help our neighbors purchase healthy food while keeping their dollars local. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on to questions, and it's Jay.
Yeah, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about where the, the 45,000 number came from specifically?
Sure, we are just anticipating that it will continue to grow each year. So 45,000 seemed like a good number for us to be able to cushion our budget. We don't know exactly how much, we're, the, the raised money can vary year to year, but right now it's around $12,000. And the 10,000 for 2023, 2024, increasing each year, is just what we projected as kind of a minimum for us to keep it at its current capacity for the next few years while we can maybe think of additional funding to continue it after that.
Are most, most or all the participants in the Food for All program Urbana residents?
I don't have a specific number, but I can get that to you. We do have tracking that where we can, we have all of their addresses and we can get that easily. I know from previous surveys that we've done just about ownership, which includes our Food for All members, I believe around 60% of our owners that answered the survey are Urbana residents.
Thank you.
And with the Roundup for Good program, are you talking about in just one month period or?
Correct, so that is a, a program. In our store, we have a different organization each month, up until, well, starting next year, we made a slight change, but typically we've just had one month allocated for a Roundup for Good program, bringing in around $5,000 and then an additional $2,000 from our annual plant sale. And we did change it next year to have two months allocated because of the growth in the, the program.
So, what, what would be your current plan for 2026? After jumping $10,000 and adding $5,000 each year, how do you, how are you going to prepare for that, that year?
Ideally, in the three years, if we have the cushion from the ARPA funds, we would be able to assess, is this something, we, we anticipate the growth to continue, but to be able to assess if it will continue at that point, to decide if we need to seek out additional funding, which would be our ultimate goal. We don't want to have to limit the, the capacity of the program, so we would almost certainly have to find other ways to bring in more money for the program.
What does somebody have to do in order to qualify to join the program?
Sure, our members are automatically eligible if they, there's a certain number of criteria, but for example, if you have EBT, you're automatically eligible. If you're a member of the WIC program, if you're on disability or veteran status or general assistance, you automatically qualify.
So, I'm getting 10% off on produce, and what was the other food category?
There, we have a program in our store called Co-op Basics, so it's just a, a number, hundreds of staple items, so things such as canned goods, toilet paper, pasta, just staple items in our store.
Okay, and then I can use my EBT card to, to buy all, all the groceries at the 10%?
Yes, you can use the EBT, you'll also get that, the 10%, and then because you are considered an actual owner in the store, there are additional discounts and deals you can take part in.
Okay, so I guess what I want to understand is, at this point in time, are you sup- sup- supplementing certain areas financially to still keep with the Food for All program?
Yes, so 2021, for example, I believe we only raised around $7,000 for the program, and then the discounts alone was a, I believe it was the, sorry, going the wrong way, $16,000. So we did have to supplement that from other places, so that's coming away from other store budgets.
Do you have any idea what has been driving the steep increase in the number of EBT users who shop at Common Ground?
I don't have hard data for that, but I just know that since the pandemic and particularly in the last year or so, inflation as it relates to food costs has really just been difficult for a lot of people. And that's not just at Common Ground, that's across co-ops, that's across grocery stores. And so hopefully, the reason that it's increased at Common Ground is because we've been able to really promote our products and our mission and get people in with the Food for All program. But in terms of the stark increase, generally speaking, inflation and supply chain disruption and just a myriad of things that are impacting our store sales as well as customers' abilities to shop for groceries.
And if you were to get fewer than $45,000, I, I understand like you would probably have to supplement from the store budget. Would that then limit the number of people you would be able to enroll in the program? And do you know what number that would be?
We currently don't have any plans to, to do that. That is our fear, that it will come to that eventually if we continue to see this growth where the funds that we're spending is so much higher than what we're bringing in. So we don't have a set number for that. You know, if we don't get the funds, we might have to figure that out sooner rather than later, but at this time, we will do everything we can to keep it going at its current capacity.
And if you saw other contributions, I think the question here is a lot of times like, did you ask Champaign in a sense with them having a lot more resources?
I'm so sorry, could you repeat that?
Did you ask for other contributions or like from the city of Champaign or the county or other local entities?
Okay, I'm, no, at this time, we have not requested any other funding.
Have you had any federal-based grants before that you've had to administer?
We have, in 2021, I believe, we received a, I don't remember the exact, it was the COVID Relief Fund that was through our store, managed through our administration and finance departments. And last year, we also received a City of Urbana Arts and Culture grant for our mural in front of our store.
I'm trying to figure out, so you said that there is approximately 60% based on the survey. Do you have the, for the people, for your owners, do you have what city of residents are from?
We do have that information in our database. That, so that number that I projected was just based off people who answered a survey. But when you sign up to become an owner, we do request name, phone number, address, so that is information we can get across the board and for Food for All specifically.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next group to present will be Red Herring Vegetarian Restaurant, Handmade Harvest, Healthy Meals for Families Facing Food Insecurity.
Hi. Nice to see you. I'm Emily McCown, Executive Director at Channing Murray Foundation.
I am Megan Herakovich. I am the Operations Manager for the Red Herring Vegetarian Restaurant.
And yeah, I'll let Megan start it off.
Hi, we are the Red Herring. We are a, a program of the Channing Murray. We are requesting funding for Handmade Harvest, which is going to be our program for healthy meals for families facing food insecurity. We're proposing to provide locally grown and prepared meals at no cost to food insecure residents during our local harvest season. So, we would be distributing three days a week via pre-existing free produce markets and our food pantry delivery program. They are already existing programs. Friday Free Market, which is composed of Solo Gracia Farm and the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, the Mobile Market, which is Carl, CU City Farms, Solo Gracia Farm, Prosperity Gardens, and the Champaign-Urbana, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, and then our own Bucket Brigade program.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
Yeah, sorry. Did you miss any of it? Okay. And our own Bucket Brigade program, which is the Channing Murray, Red Herring, and the Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office. And over the course of the last two years...
Two years? Nearly three.
Almost three years, we have served over 5,000 Urbana residents with our program, and that is the Deliverable Food Pantry Program.
Yeah, you may remember me from the town board meeting, but we've been, as Megan said, we've been doing that Bucket Brigade program, and we have a lot of good metrics from having done that in the last three years. And so, a quarter of our referrals that come from the township are, are people without access to a kitchen. So I think we really know the need, and we've heard that from our participants and, and recipients, that they, they need this service in order to access this healthy local food. And, and 81% of, of families that we've, you know, we've been processing referrals from have said, yes, please, if you have fresh food, we want it, fresh produce, yes, please, we want prepared meals. And you know, Connie White, you've heard this from the food bank and others, 11% of food, food insecure, and in the Mobile Market, which is a big collaboration in town, and the Friday Free Market, they're in these, focusing on serving these neighborhoods that have a high SBI and are, are places that we really want to address demographics that are experiencing food insecurity. And so, I guess that, that is to say like, why, why are, why is our project the best use of city ARPA funds? And we, we have the data, we've been doing this, we know that it's a need not only from our recipients, but also from our partners who have been doing this food distribution, like Mobile Market and the Friday Free Market. You know, Tracy helped us come up with this idea from Solo Gracia to, they, they say, the people that they're serving, same with ours, are saying, hey, we need this fresh, healthy food prepared. And, and to me, yeah, we've heard that need both from our recipients and from our partners. And we have that logistics set, like, we know how to do this, we've been doing this for a few years, this free, this food distribution, so. So, again, why our project? We can, we can really nail, nail those three funding goals, increasing availability and affordability of food, providing relief and support for local businesses, we want a source from as, as many local farms, and also just local grocery stores as we are able, and invest in infrastructure to increase community health, safety, and future resilience. We know that, you know, you, you, these, these neighborhoods and the people we're trying to serve don't have as much access to healthy, healthy food. So, we're trying to really grow this in a sustainable way to meet that health need, but also we have such a wide network of partners that I really feel like this addresses sustainability and kind of like getting everybody on the same project. So, we've, you can see the kind of metrics that we're gonna, we're working with, it's pretty simple. It's, it, to me, it seems like a no-brainer where we can, we can show the number of meals distributed, we can show the people served, we've been doing this with Bucket Brigade, and you've seen that at the town board meetings. We can, we can show the demographics of the individuals served. And I guess one, one other piece that I want to highlight that I've heard from our partners and that we're really excited about is this food education piece around it, these mobile, these pro- free produce markets that are... that are targeting people experiencing food insecurity and, you know, on the front lines of poverty, you know, might not have the resources or time or whatever to know how to use some of this free produce. And so having the, having the prepared meals right next to the food that's being given out is an education piece. So we want to be able to create recipe cards and do some of that education work alongside of the food distribution.
So the funds requested from the ARPA funds would be used for the summer season of 2023. We would use this season to build a Pay It Forward program from the Red Herring, but also to really collaborate with our partners and find investment opportunities there as well.
Okay, we'll move on to questions now. And it will be. One easy question is if you could clarify the amount, because we have 24 and 21 some in both.
That's my mistake. It's 24.
It's four, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate this. I think it's a, I think it's a great operational item to consider. My question is, can you talk more about what happens in 2024?
Yeah.
2025?
Totally.
How does it go on?
Yeah, I feel, I feel pretty, I felt pretty confident that because we have such a wide network of partners and our fundraising within our organization is so strong that pivoting to this direction of getting ARPA funds to lay the groundwork to say, yes, we can do this. Our, we can focus our fundraising dollars with just our customers. That's in coming into the Red Herring Restaurant during the school year to pay it forward for the meals that are going to be given out to the larger community off of campus for those who need it most. So I think we can pivot a lot of our fundraising dollars internally to this project once we get it built. Not only that, I think with, with, just, yeah, like I said, the number of partners, I think they're going to be really excited about what we can build with ARPA funds. And I anticipate some strong enthusiasm from these kind of, yeah, bigger partners who have more connections with funding revenues, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I assume that you're going to use the Friday Free Market and Mobile Market as a way to deliver the meals. Can you tell me the location of those two?
Sure. I know Cornerstone Fellowship is one and the, for the Friday Free Market. And then, you know, I actually don't have that right in front of me. I don't know if you know, Beck McBride is the one kind of organizing logistics for the Mobile Market, the Carl Bus.
That is on their website. We can pull directly from that. They serve two different neighborhoods, I believe, one on the north end, and I'm not quite sure where the other is.
And they've got two different distribution days a week, yeah.
Emily, can you tell me, just out of curiosity, is the Red Herring Restaurant back open and fully functioning and going strong?
We sure are.
I'm interested in the demographic of people that you assist as far as where in Urbana that you mostly hit and also the group of people that you noticed most that need food help, help with the, could you give me an idea?
Sure, yeah. I don't, I don't have the exact demographics in front of me, but majority are people of color. We have single parent homes. I know we listed that in our application. A little, we have a list in the, like, how are we kind of serving people in the most need? We have a list of demographics actually in our application. And I don't have it in front of me. But, but we did kind of break down those demographics there. Thank you, yeah.
So just to clarify, the $25,000 just to start a new initiative, which is prepared meals, serving prepared meals, which you've not done before. Are those all for Urbana residents? This $25,000 worth of meals?
So Friday Free Market, Bucket Brigade, those are all distribution, distributed to Urbana residents and that neighborhood near Cornerstone Fellowship. There is a distribution for Mobile Market that is in Champagne. And.
And these meals will be distributed in Champagne as well?
Yes.
Percentage-wise?
Maybe 15%. I can get that to you. I don't have an exact number in front of me.
Thank you.
So with the breakdown of costs, you've got 61% for labor. And you talked about raising funds to try to make this sustainable. Are you going to have to hire or is that to support existing staff? That would just be supporting myself and our kitchen manager. We would be running the entire program.
Are you in pursuit of other ARPA funds since the Mobile Market will be distributed in Champagne as well? And would you be pursuing other funds to sort of, you know, maybe increase your budget to even serve more people?
Yeah, that would be great. After hearing tonight's presentations, I'll be following that lead, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last presentation before the break will be Sologratia Farm, Community Farm Expansion for Enhanced Sustainable Fresh Food Production, Engagement, and Consumption.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Marlin and members of the council for this opportunity. My name is Tracy Barclay. I'm the Director of Sologratia Farm. I'm here to request support through ARPA funds for $750,000. It'd be a one-time infrastructure investment in the expansion of our community farm. The project timeline is for two years, so '23, '24. Our farm was started over 11 years ago by St. Matthew Lutheran Church to address food insecurity. We know that one in six members of our community are considered food insecure and that fresh vegetables are a key part of a healthy diet. We were charged, the mission of our farm is to use sustainable farming practices to grow good, fresh, healthy food and donate at least 10% of everything we grow into the community while also building community as we can through partnerships and a number of different outlets. Sorry. What this looks like and has over the last 11 years is that we've donated consistently between 20 and 30% of everything we grow into the community. And we're hitting over 15,000 pounds per year now. Over 11 years, we've donated over 125,000 pounds of good, fresh food into our community. That means it's reaching Eastern Illinois Food Bank every week. It's reaching Daily Bread Soup Kitchen. It's reaching Jubilee Cafe and the Little Free Market and Mobile Market on a weekly basis through the growing season. We also have up to 20% of our sales at Farmer's Markets to recipients and patrons using Link. We're able to do this because we follow sustainable farming practices. That means a lot of things, but ultimately, what we're left with is healthy soil, water, food, happy neighbors, enhanced wildlife, and pollinator habitat. Community building is a part of everything we do and has been from the beginning. It's part of what's made us so strong and special. We have a CSA program serving over 200 families. We have a robust volunteer program. We have monthly public events and are committed to doing that as we continue. We've built a farm-to-school program district-wide in partnership with Champagne Urbana Public Health District and in partnership with Cunningham Township, Urbana Park District, and Channing Murray Foundation. We built the Solidary Gardens Initiative. We're in our third year. It's a gardening-for-good initiative to work with home and community gardeners to get more good, fresh food grown in our community and into the hands of those that need and want it. So in order to keep doing what we want to do and what we're good at, we really need to expand our farm. So we've been farming on three leased parcels. And currently, if you look at the map, we are on four acres and have, on the campus of St. Matthew Lutheran Church, we've been there since the beginning. For the last five years, we've been farming five acres to the north of the main campus. And we're in our last month of the lease that was just sold to the City of Urbana. And we have six acres that we've been farming for the last two years just north at the corner of Colorado and, sorry, Philo. And we probably will be farming there for another couple of years. But they're all leased, they're temporary. We really need to know that we can sustain this operation long-term. We have a proven business and organizational model that with an expanded site, will be able to continue for decades to come. So we are under contract and closing in a few short weeks on 29 acres just right around the corner from our current operation. It's 22 acres of tillable, prime farmland, and seven acres of wooded. What this allows us to do is design a farm from the ground up to meet our sustainable production and education outreach goals. It also allows for our existing four acres on the campus of St. Matthew Lutheran Church to be converted 100% to an education demonstration farm so we can be more public-facing, reaching more schoolchildren, reaching more members of our community to teach food production, preparation, processing, and just general enjoyment of good, fresh food. So the features of our new farm include over 20 acres in not only annual vegetables, which we've been growing for, over the last decade, but also expanding into perennial vegetables, fruits, nuts, and honey. As I mentioned, we'll maintain the seven woods, seven acres of woods for wildlife. And then our request for ARPA funds from the City of Urbana is for building. We're going to need a storage building, wash pack facility, and offices. We also will be putting in a greenhouse and a few high tunnels that allows for us to intensively grow high-value crops. It also allows for us to extend our growing season and maintain the staff year-round. And we'll be investing in solar energy and possibly geothermal. We're looking into it right now. There's considerable alignment with ARPA goals. The first is to increase availability and affordability of food. That's the whole point of our farm. This expansion will allow sustainable sales and donations as well as expanded and diversified offerings. It's a considerable investment in infrastructure that will result in community health, safety, future resilience, long-term financial, economic, and social sustainability, especially with our partnerships. It'll also increase job training and placement opportunities. We employ 15 to 20 people. We'll employ more soon and serve as a job training site with Dream, Housing Authority, YES, and Cunningham Children's Home, allowing many different skills to be developed. It's also allowing expansion of our educational programming, currently reaching over 500, 700 residents. It's important for me to point out that this will be filling a funding gap. We know we can leverage these funds with donations, funding, raising events, and additional grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? We'll begin with Grace.
I got confused here because that was my question about leveraging other funds. So I guess if you had anything else to add to that, your final thought?
So our expansion budget is around 2.5 million. Many of our fundraising materials will see, say, 1.2 million. That was for our first phase. We consider the first phase to be buying the land, installing the well, building a storage building, allowing production of food on the farm. The second phase really is to get the building built and for us to be more efficient and complete in our operation on the farm. We've raised about half of that right now. 750,000 requests from ARPA funds is about 30%, of what we would need. And that would really help us move forward in building the building. The part of this project that's important for us is we're a very seasonal operation and we're really good at growing food, but it's a very complex operation. We really want for the building to be built in a complete way. And ideally, we would not phase it. Phasing it means that we're moving over multiple seasons. It means that it's taking away from our ability to grow food. We're really, that's what we're good at, is growing good, high-quality food and getting out in a very efficient way, meeting a lot of people's needs. The longer we drag this project out, the more time we're spending on fundraising. And really, we're looking at the expenses raising over time. We're a not-for-profit farm with a very tight budget. And so what we're looking for is to move from where we are right now to the expanded farm. And once we're there, we'll be able to cover our organizational and business operating expenses. This is what we need, is an injection of funds to get us from where we are right now. It's where we need to be to then be expanding our production.
Thank you, Tracy, for the presentation. Could you talk a little bit about the farm's presence in the neighborhood and the partnerships in the Silverwood neighborhood?
Sure. So it's an important part of our identity and our culture that we are really diverse in how we're meeting people's needs. We're meeting people where they are. There are lots of different ways that people receive assistance. So for the last, I think we just finished our seventh year, we've been in partnership with Public Health District and we offer a Little Free Market in front of Corso and Fellowship and at the base of Steer Place. We have been serving hundreds of pounds of fresh vegetables every Friday afternoon from June through October and partnering with Public Health to distribute hygiene supplies, basic dry goods. We also worked with Youth Build to build a Little Free Pantry so that there could be resources in that neighborhood day in, day out, year-round, even when we're outside of the production season. But that's an important, that's been an important part. And really, over the years, we've seen more of our produce going towards that Little Free Market. In fact, this last year, we donated at least, well, over 3,000 pounds of fresh produce.
Thank you.
I think you said that you donate approximately 20 to 30% of your produce. Can you estimate the division between Urbana, Champagne, and Champagne County?
I was just doing that math when I was watching the Food Bank presentation, understanding more that 21% of who they're serving are Urbana residents. So it's kind of hard because we're not the distribution point for most. We're the production farm and we partner strategically with distribution partners. We are directly distributing at the Little Free Market, so that's 100% Urbana residents. We give to Daily Bread Soup Kitchen. It's hard to say how many are Urbana residents, but maybe half. Eastern Illinois Food Bank, this year, we gave 4,000 pounds. 21% of those pounds, I would assume, would be going to Urbana residents and probably more because what we hear from staff at the Food Bank is that our produce is often the first to be chosen because it's, often they're getting fresh produce also from other grocery stores, but ours is coming right out of the fields, very high quality. So I expect that that's probably moving faster and serving some of the closer clientele that they're serving. We also just give a couple of thousand pounds of produce to Mobile Market, so they have four sites that they're serving every two weeks. Three of them are in Champagne and one is in Urbana. And then there are Jubilee Cafe, also a couple thousand pounds a year, maybe half Champagne, half Urbana.
I'm interested in the job training and work site training to learn how to grow food. Are you partnering at all with Urbana High School?
Yes, so in a couple of ways. So we have worked over the years with the Care4U program and also the Youth Employment Service. So we're working with high schoolers, both from Champagne and Urbana schools, to be employed at our farm over the summertime. And often what happens is there's a certain portion of funded hours. And then we've hired on a lot of those students once those hours from the programs have run out. This last year, we partnered with Dream and had a number, two different employees come from the Dreamers Program. We've also had a number of youth from Youth Build come out and work with us. It's a really important skill set that we have to offer, food production, processing, also community service. And then with the high school through the farm-to-school program, we've been working with the FFA and courses. So there's a lot more opportunity there.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
With that, we'll take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 20 minutes to nine. And we'll start with Champagne County EDC, Justine Peterson. Number 22 on our list, Champagne County EDC.
All right, good evening again, everyone. Carly McCory McKay with the Champagne County EDC. And I am pleased to have Justine Peterson with me.
Hi, I'm Sherri Flanagan-Vasquez. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Justine Peterson. And in the audience today, we have Robert Boyle, our CEO, and Tristan Brown, who is our Illinois Market Manager, who offices out of the Champagne County EDC.
Yes, Tristan is with me. All right, so excited for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about potentially establishing the Urbana Small Business Micro Loan Fund with Justine Peterson. So this is an effort that our organization, the EDC, and as host to the Illinois Small Business Development Center, has had as a priority. And that's really to expand access to capital to small businesses in our area. So this particular fund that we're proposing tonight would be specific to businesses. would be specific to businesses in Urbana, which could include home-based businesses. And really, the overarching goal is to establish a fund to help support businesses who want to start and/or expand their business. And really, it's to deploy safe and affordable capital to these companies. And there's really a focus on those who are traditionally underserved or they're unable to borrow through traditional financing options. And I'll get into a little bit of the sort of why and the, and the data here shortly, but in speaking to really the lasting impact of this project for utilizing these funds. So one of the most important things as part of working with Justine Peterson, which is a U.S. Treasury certified Community Development Financial Institution, or CDFI for short, too many acronyms, is that businesses not only can access the capital that they need, but they also get technical assistance. This is provided via wraparound services via Justine Peterson, but also with community partners, including our agency, the Small Business Development Center, and other business associations who work closely with small businesses in our community or those who want to start businesses in our community. And CDFIs have a multiplier effect. So as borrowers repay their loans, money gets recycled back into the community, but also the, the, the fund itself continues to revolve even after the grant period, which has many effects like sustaining, creating and sustaining businesses, which creates jobs, leads to homeownership, and other things. So in speaking to, you know, utilizing these funds for this particular idea and just sort of why we've been discussing this for quite some time, our organization interacts with over 1,000 individuals a year who are either small business owners or are interested in starting a small business. So we see and talk to a lot of individuals across the community. We also very closely partner with other business associations and certainly local units of government, including all of the Economic Development Team here at the city of Urbana. Outside of the traditional questions that come, which include, you know, how do I even just go about starting a business and what are the steps? Really, the number one question that we get in our office and is also reported back to us from all of our local partners is how do I get access to capital? And so that's really why we've been focusing on this effort. And through all of the different mediums in which we communicate and collect information, you know, this is the number one thing that's flagged. We have an intake process that's required as part of the state. And more than 90% of the intake forms that come in have the checkbox access to capital that's checked when they're wanting to come talk to one of our advisors. As far as the ability to, to, to launch this fund and to manage it in accordance with, you know, the guidelines, as I mentioned earlier during our other proposal, we have extensive grant management experience, but more importantly, Justine Peterson does as well. And this is an industry that they're very actively involved in. And as, as we all know, lending is a highly regulated industry. And as I mentioned, they are U.S. Treasury certified CDFI, and this is what they focus on, and this is what they do. We also know that this is a proven model, and we've seen results from other communities who have utilized funds to establish loan programs like this. So this is done all across the country, but particularly here in central Illinois. This was done in Springfield, Illinois, and has had very good results. So between results that we know, best practices, and also the needs that we hear quite frequently here in our community, we believe that this will solve a really critical issue in accessing capital for those who are interested in starting or growing their businesses. So we assumed that there would be great interest in these funds and that you guys would receive quite a few proposals. So one of the things that we wanted to do was provide a range of options for you to consider. So we, we provided four different levels of funding as part of this proposal, ranging from 175 to $475,000, which will then leverage additional funds. And as you can see here, we tried to include some anticipated outcomes of potentially how many businesses this loan fund could serve, assuming a product loan portfolio of about $50,000, which is the most frequent request, $50,000 and under that we get in our office. So we're hopeful that this can get established, and we're confident in the ability for Justine Peterson to manage this as they have a proven track record of doing so.
We can move on to questions, I believe, James.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, Carly, and, and thank you for the both presentations tonight. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this scale of how much we could give and how much impact it would have. I guess it's leading to my question of if we were to, let's say, option one, $475,000. What's, I'll, I'll call it the loss rate. What is the, the life cycle of a $475,000 pool as you, as money is lost over time when there's not payback?
So our proposal is to leverage the 400 and, I'm sorry. Our proposal is to leverage the $475,000 with a $3.5 million fund. What we would do is we'd use the loan loss reserve portion of the budget to set aside in order for us to borrow money from local bank partners. And then we would take responsibility for the losses using that loss reserve. How, how much could we revolve that? Probably about three times before we had maximized that loss reserve.
Okay. If, if I could just summarize what I thought I heard is three, we'd get three times $475,000 out of putting that in at the beginning.
We would originate $3.5 million for a $475,000 grant.
So we would get $3.5 million of loans.
Loan capital.
Okay, thank you. It's very helpful.
And something that I forgot to mention is that for the, the amounts that are being requested and proposed here, all of that funding goes directly to leveraging dollars to establishing the loan fund through other funding sources. That's what's going to pay for some of the admin and the marketing for, for these types of programs. And that's something that our office has dedicated and is taking care of, and partly why we now have a full-time Justine Peterson staff member here based in our office.
So I believe you, on one of your slides, you said that the definition was 50,000 or less. Do you have any idea of what the median amount of a loan would be?
I, I believe our average loan size will be around 25,000, 20 to 25,000.
What's the average interest rate on your loans?
Sure. This pool would have interest rates between 8 and 12%.
I've heard of these microloans. I'm, I'm not familiar, I'm not, um, it's not, definitely not my, my bellywake. Could you explain to me the process or exactly how that's giving, you know, you, even if it was 175,000, how that would generate itself throughout the community? Or help? Could you give me an example?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we would do is we would turn around and use those funds as leverage, and we would borrow money from a local funding partner. And that's how we've capitalized all of our loan funds. For example, we recently closed on a $5 million facility from PNC Bank. That, we have guaranteed those funds. We make an independent underwriting decision on who we loan those to. If our borrowers don't pay us back, we still have to pay PNC back. And so that's why we need to raise that loss reserve. Did that answer your question?
Okay.
The, the, yeah, the amount that's dedicated then goes to leverage additional funds from other local financial institutions to create one big pot that then gets capitalized and given out to small businesses who, who need that, need that capital. And as far as, you know, the, the concept of a microloan, you know, one of the reasons for this focus is that for, for whatever reasons, that they're not able to go to a traditional financial institution, just walk into a bank and get the loan. You know, that could be for a variety of reasons. Low credit scores, lack of relationships with the banker, you know, so on and so forth. So we, we get requests all the time from, you know, inquiries ranging from as low as, you know, $2,500 all the way up to oftentimes the $50,000 mark. So for this particular proposal, we really focused on a loan product of up to $50,000. But, you know, certainly, things can be adjusted, and we, we can work from there.
Is this program set up so that if you get a loan through Justine Peterson, you, your business has to be based within the city limits?
Yes, under this proposal, this, this, these funds would be just to Urbana-based businesses.
Okay, with, with an actual address?
Yes.
Including home-based, that could include home-based businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk a bit about, you talked about this kind of the cycle with these funds. What is the long-term plan for, in Urbana?
So overall, across the county, we are having conversations with local units of government and lending institutions to help establish these funds. A, as we sort of discussed earlier, sort of just based on the amount of requests that come in for particular loans, the businesses that take advantage of those loans, sort of depends on how the timeline of the fund itself lasts. However, as we've worked to build all of these efforts, we're continuing to talk, particularly with local financial institutions, about continuing these services, primarily focused on small business lending. But the other, Justine Peterson also offers other services, including credit building and home ownership opportunities. And depending on what partner is at the table, specific loan funds can be established.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Hoist Center, the Blessing Bank.
Got to put my glasses on. Hello, my name is Dr. Jania Klingenberg, and I am the founder and executive director of the Hoist Center. Just a little bit of background. The Hoist Center was established as a 501(c)(3) back in 2010 by a group of, a group of us friends who wanted to create a place for youth to learn more about themselves, their talents, and options available to them. Our mission is to decrease youth exposure to violence by connecting them to educational and positive recreational activities in order to increase awareness of options. We strive to provide youth and families with basic needs and mental health supportive services in order to promote a better quality of life. Just a little bit about me. I hold a doctorate degree in clinical psychology. I have over 20 years of experience in, in the mental health field. I've published research with the University of Illinois, researching the mental health, the mental health needs of middle school students at Urbana Middle School. And this was a longitudinal study that took place from 2018 through 2021. I work with youth and families in Urbana, at the Urbana Middle School as a clinical professional. And I've mastered obtaining donations to support the basic needs of families and enjoy, and I enjoy helping and servicing others. The problem, so according to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the city of Urbana, Bana's demographic information stated that Urbana has a higher poverty rate than the state and country. Okay, that's significant. This rate of poverty makes the assumption that many of these families cannot afford proper and continuous mental health services. Families are in greater need for basic, basic household items, clothing, and mental health services. A rise in mental health needs pre-pandemic and more evident post-pandemic. Individuals and families have suffered a great deal of loss and not sure what to do to cope. Families in poverty can, cannot afford mental health services. There is a three- to six-month waiting period, as we probably all heard this, during this, this whole process, for services, for mental health services. The anticipated outcomes, to increase the access and use of mental health services for low-income disadvantaged and other impacted by the pandemic, decrease the percentage of individuals and, individuals and families in need of mental health services, support at least three organizations or schools with donated funding for individualized mental health support, help approximately 25 individuals or families with brief or long-term services, assist in reducing crime, moving families closer together, and increase insight into opportunities available to them to begin to create a more positive future. Project the Blessing Bank. The purpose of the Blessing Bank is actually to provide families with basically needed items. We receive donations every two weeks from Walmart to literally just give away to the community. And most of these items are basic household needs from electronics, clothing, underwear, socks, like simple, basic needs. The Hoist Center has provided families in the past with support in various ways and would like to expand support to include mental health services because mental health has become a basic need, as we all know. We would like to provide financial support to those who are low-income disadvantaged or impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic by helping to prioritize mental health. We would like to increase availability and affordability of mental health services, work with private practice mental health companies to decrease the wait time for services for people who need it, help eradicate the stigmatism around getting necessary help for families. The project will be measured by monitoring the increase in financial support and increase in requests from individuals in our community, our community-based organizations, and asking for funding and support for mental health services for individuals that they work with, and increase in donations received and purchased to give away to the community, and increase in requests to bring the Blessing Bank to events and consistent participation and services funded, ultimately, ultimately leading them to self-sufficiency and sustainability by utilizing available resources. The data collected will be monitored on spreadsheets created to track donations, collaborations, resources, and places of service and follow-up. Budget, so the Blessing Bank budget. So personnel is 621,110.56. I'm not going to read each one of these things, I know we all can read. But this is to, to hire a part-time project coordinator and two part-time caseworkers, including paying a portion of the executive director's salary. Supplies, so I put mental health services as part of supplies because in the grant application, I did not see a section or an area where I can put the cost for the mental health services. So I included that in the supplies. So what that equals out to is weekly services at $150 an hour for mental health services for 52 weeks. And it's for 52 weeks because the times that most people are not working during the holidays are the times that most people need mental health services. So most mental health providers are still working during those times. So it's important to make sure that you have availability of mental health services during that time. Training staff is 32,000. Renting utilities for office space is 31,000. Professional services, which we hiring a grant manager, bookkeeper, lawyer. And then the budget also includes a 25% fringe benefits rate for one full-time employee and 7.65% for fringe benefits for three part-time employees. And a 5% rate added to each, to each of these costs to account for the increase of costs each year because, as we all know, you know, inflation, right? In the budget, also a cost paying for mental health services, like I mentioned before, is added in supplies. That's it. Any questions? Sorry, I try to do that as fast as possible.
Questions? We'll begin with Mary Alice.
So I'm, I'm assuming that this is already established. You're talking about the, the distribution of stuff. So I'm wondering if you can tell me where it is and how many people you currently serve?
So I don't have a number of who I currently serve because what happens is we are invited to come to different events or churches or organizations with our Blessing Bank. So what we do is we literally take, we have about six to eight tables where we have household items for people to come and just take with their need. The, I'm housed currently in Urbana, but I have, I utilize a warehouse in Rantua because we got too much stuff to leave, to put in my garage. And my husband would kill me if I keep bringing stuff to the house. So he graciously allows us to utilize some of his warehouse space in Rantua to, to keep some of our items. Just today, we received 14 pallets of stuff, of items from Walmart. And we're trying to figure out where to go and where to give it to. So if y'all know any places, let us know.
The, what I hear often is, in Champaign County, is what mental health? I mean, what I mean by that is there's a shortage of psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, counselors. I mean, there's, you know, you know this story. So couldn't, I guess what I'm asking you is, how are you going to be able to find a $150 an hour counselor and all that?
That's why I'm working with private practices because private practices have more flexibility to receive clients. They can choose whether they want more, or they can take on more, or they take, take on less. They can hire individuals. Larger organizations tend to have more clients and so, and less workers, like, as, as you're saying. So with private practices, they have more flexibility to be able to take on clients. So it'd be obviously more than one. It'd, it'd be multiple private practices that I would like to work with in order to obtain, for them to, you know, receive some of the clients that, you know, I'm sending to them. With the funding that I asked for, I could only do 25 individuals. With the funding that I asked for, I could only do 25 individuals or families to start, you know, each year. And that's for a whole year of services, and I do want a whole year of services because it's needed. You know, having someone do two months, three months, you know, it will be based off of need, but it's not enough time to actually really help someone with their mental health concerns.
Are you current, currently, I know you said you work with kids at the middle school at Urbana. So currently, you make your referrals to private practice with, when you have to, with the the families and children in the middle school?
So I don't work at the middle school anymore. I I have my own private practices that I have. I do mental health coaching. But what what's been happening through HOICE is that a lot of the families that we meet at these events when we're giving away items, I have conversations with them, and many of them are asking a lot of questions about when they find out, obviously, that I'm a mental health professional, they always ask about where can I, I need help with, where do I go, because that is a question that a lot of people need. And so I do know some mental health professionals in in Urbana that I do refer them to, or, you know, other areas as well. But yeah, so I actually refer them to individuals that I know, you know, right now, to receive services.
Okay, thank you. So you're starting a new program from the ground up, and this 1.8 million dollars would serve 25 people.
So it's the Blessing Bank I've been doing since, I actually started that, what year is this, it's 20, so 2019 is when I started receiving donations. The organization's been existing since 2010, I started in Chicago.
But the mental health portion is new.
The mental health portion, yes.
And that 1.8 million is for the mental health portion?
Correct.
How will, and my, my question focuses what was asked before, is how will people prioritize your clients over all the other clients that are waiting in line?
Well, that's why building relationships and collaborations is so important, because a part of you build, we will have an MOU with each other to say, I will send you, or I will, you know, refer so many clients to you a month, and you will prioritize, or you will allow my clients that I send to you and refer to you to be accepted. And actually, what you have to do is, with mental health professionals and private practices, you have to ask, how many can you receive? So when it comes to a time where some, I got, I have a referral, I would say, I would look at my referral list, and I would contact them and say, how many spots do you have available right now? Because maybe they had five for me, and two of them came already, and I only have three left to be able to send to them. So we building an MOU with each other to say, I'm referring these clients to you, and you are agreeing, you are agreeing to receive so many of of my referrals within a certain timeframe.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the sustainability, you're asking for funding for staff members as well as for these contractual services?
Services.
Yeah, so what would be the plan for after the ARPA money runs out?
So after that, so during this whole process, during the, during the ARPA funding process, I'm going to be continued doing fundraising, and also there are other organizations that I'm actually, actually have meetings with, beginning at the beginning of the year, to seek funding as well. United Way is one organization I'm talking to, the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois, and I'm looking into the Champaign County Mental Health Board, so there's a few other organizations that I am going to and, and, you know, to request some funding. Yes, I did, you know, this year, I just realized that, especially as a mental health professional and working in a middle school and seeing just so much need for mental health services, I'm, I'm an organization that's servicing individuals and providing them with basic needs. Mental health is a basic need now, and we can't pretend like it's not anymore, and something has to be done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Well Experience.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Stephanie Cockrow, and I am the executive director at the Well Experience. I truly appreciate you all allowing me to speak to you this evening about this amazing organization and the Well Family Care Program. So I just want to say, the Well Family Care Program has, first of all, the Well Experience has become a vital community support in the last four years. Since 2018, which was our inception, we have consistently provided help that heals, restores, and empowers historically disadvantaged families. The services at the Well Experience focus on the family, and then we have very specific focuses on women and girls. The supports we have provided have been, we have been able to create strong relationships and have a a relationship with not only the the families and the community, but also community partners. We have a reputation for getting the job done, we have a reputation of integrity and fidelity for the services and the supports that we provide. So this funding will be helping us to continue the supports we are already providing, and we will be able to continue the mental health services and promote greater services and enhance the services we provide to families. I'm trying to stay focused, y'all, because I can talk a lot, but I know I got six minutes. So let me tell you, first of all, we provide counseling, I am a social worker with a focus on mental health, and we have trained clinical staff on our team, as well as case managers and those who have been trained in trauma-informed care and healing-centered engagement, staff members that are trained to provide case management, even those that are trained in youth mental health crisis, because we serve families from zero to adults in a variety of services, so I want to, so, I'll, just to get into the questions, when we talk about our lasting impact and sustainability, well, first of all, we have the capacity to provide the services that we are providing and to enhance those services. We have, we are already connected to local and state funders. We are funded by the Board of Mental Health, by United Way, recently by the RYD, yay, through, and so I'm super excited about that. And so this helps us with our after-school program, our summer program, and the social emotional learning and mental health services that we not only provide to youth, but also to their parents. If you know, if you want to build sustainability for children, you cannot leave out their parents, or else we continually have this cycle where children go back home, and no matter what we do in-house, we have to make sure we're building those sustainability's for their families as well. So this program, our programs have have had a lasting impact. We are not just a quick fix mental health organization, we're providing wraparound services. Case management that includes career workforce development and career development. We even, we teach financial assist, financial management. When someone, we have a financial assistance program, and when families come to us for financial assistance, one of the requirements of that is that they come in also for, to receive financial counseling and to help, help with budgeting from some of our staff that have taken training to help them with those things. So this funding will help the Well Experience increase the services that we are already providing and serve more families and continue to enhance our programs. We also will be able to enhance the facility, I am excited to announce that the Well Experience now has two spaces. We have 1803 Philo Road, which is our, more of our youth center where we provide youth and teen and young mom services. Now we have 1809, which is also, which is now our adult service center, where we'll hold the Well Family Care Program. The reason we wanted to do that is because with so many children in the building at different times, and some of the intense trauma that a lot of adults are dealing with, we wanted to also provide a space where we can service adults, adults and families separate from our children, and we were able to do that, and though, that is also a part of our plan this year, and we're super excited about that. The Well Family Care Program is not expendable. We will continue fundraising and seeking funding, so this program is here for many years, and we've already done that. We've already leveraged quite a few funds from different organizations, and we're already writing grants to increase this. We have had a lot, in the four years we have been in existence, three of those years have been with state, local, and federal grants, and that, that, we have a, ooh, we have a great, we have a good relationship with grant holders, and so we're doing a good job with that. Okay, so the Well Cam, the Well Family Care Program is, I just want to share with you that we are already doing the work, our staff is trained, we have the safe space, families are already connected to us, and we are just wanting to enhance our services. We currently have social workers, interns from the U of I, 14 youth development leaders. We have, we have a staff that is already on our list, thank you.
Thank you.
And you can just take a look at our mission statement while you ask me questions.
Succinct, thank you. Chris, I believe you're the first one to question.
I didn't catch it, and maybe you wrote it, maybe you said it, where are you located, are you in Urbana?
Yes, we are, we're at 1803 Philo Road in Urbana. And I do want to say that 75% of the families we serve are Urbana families, and the 25% are Champaign County and surrounding areas. Our Urbana numbers would actually be higher if we had more support with transportation, which is also in this grant.
Okay, so you offer several social work services already?
Yes.
And you want to enhance, how, after you use up your money, how will you continue to sustain that?
We have all, like I was saying, we are all ready, so we're not, we're not just seeking funding just from you. We have Board of Mental Health funding, which thankfully, because of the support that we provide, and they believe in us, and we have proven that we're providing those services, my grants with them each year have continued to increase. We serve with fidelity, United Way grants have continued to increase. We also, with the help of the University of Illinois, are working to create two annual fundraisers that are going to be amazing, and one that we just did, which was a book release we did with our girls, and we had a fundraising event which was phenomenal, and we had so many people come out that this community, the Urbana community believes in us. We are connected to the schools, Urbana School District is a huge partner of ours, and we have counselors in the schools. So I have no doubt that our community with what we do are going to work to help us keep this open.
So can you give a little more detail on your relationship with Urbana schools, particularly what you see your relationship with the new alternative education Comcast School, for the lack of the new, better word? What, what will your role be in that school, Vinnie?
So I was actually recently asked if I would serve on a planning team that they are, with the, this is with Dr. Preston William, I want to say Prairie, so sorry, with Preston William Elementary School. So I work with the, I have had many conversations with Dr. Ivory Tatum and with several people within the district about how the Well Experience can support them. We currently have parent mentors inside of several schools in Urbana. Our parent mentors are helping to support the schools, we have counselors that visit students in the schools on a regular to those who have been identified as high-risk and having some mental health concerns. So I see us having a very longstanding relationship, and I've already been asked to make sure that our organization is at the table when they start talking about even greater supports and their anti, and their anti-violence initiatives, so.
My question is already answered.
Can you talk more about the transportation piece of this, and what percentage of your requests would that be?
Girl, yes, so I will tell you, we, there are a couple of schools right now that we have kids at that really want to come to our after-school program, and we are unable to transport them, and there are families. Our after-school program has proven to be such a great resource in this community, and we want to be able to transport more kids. And so one of the things we looked into, even if it's leasing a vehicle or doing something to allow us to pick up more kids and bring them in. Also, when we talk about the barriers to mental health services, one of those barriers is not being able to get there. We provide Ubers for every, or taxis for every family that does not have a car, and so when they're coming in for case management meetings or to a counseling session, we get them there, you know, we make sure that they can get there because not having those supports is not an option. So we want to remove all barriers so that there's no reason for them not to access mental health support.
Could you explain more about the cost for rent utilities and construction?
Yes, okay, I actually copied that down, because I knew after so many others that I would get answered that, asked that. So basically, as far as rent, in our current, in the 1803 space, our rent right now is 27,000 a year. I'm not asking for that, that is covered in another grant. I am in our second space, which we just acquired, that space is where our Well Family Care Center is going to be, and that is the space that is going to cost us 20,000 for the whole year, and we put that in the budget that will cover the cost of this. While we are doing that, within this time, we are already connecting with organizations that are going to help us. And in our next budgets, we're going to write in these funds so that it'll be covered. So I have no doubt that we'll be able to sustain these, this building for quite some time. It's just we definitely need a small portion from this grant in order to make sure we maintain our two buildings.
Hi, thank you. Can you talk about the population you serve right now?
Can I?
In six seconds?
So, yes, I can, in six seconds, I will tell you that this year alone, according to our Board of Mental Health stats, we served 262 non-treatment plan clients and unduplicated 157 treatment plan clients. We had 1,542 service calls, and we did seven community service events.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Trauma Survivors Heal Two.
Good evening, my name is Leslie Smith, I am the founder and executive director of Trauma Survivors Heal Two. We are a grassroots organization funded by, currently funded by DCEO, state funding through the IMC, and it is a small grant, an incubator grant, so to speak, and so we're asking for funding to continue with our programming. So to answer the first question, what would be the lasting impact of this project after the ARPA fund, ARPA funds run out? Well, research has shown that having a strong support system has many positive benefits, such as higher levels of well-being, better coping skills, and a longer and healthier life. Studies also have been shown that social support can reduce depression and anxiety, and can reduce stress-related disorders like post-traumatic stress disorders or PTSD. Trauma Survivors Heal Two believes that if we address the symptoms impacted by trauma in our youth in a safe, supportive, compassionate, respectful, and through a trauma-informed approach environment, they can restructure their thought process, manage their emotions, having a more positive and appropriate outcome through their actions, allowing them to become more productive members of their community, moving forward with goals and values that align with a sense of hope, wellness, and a healthier, happier, becoming role models for their peers. Second question, why would this project be the best use of the city ARPA funds? Trauma Survivors Heal Two project would be the best use of ARPA funds because the National Child Traumatic Stress Network data from the most recent national survey of adolescents and other studies indicate that one in four children and adolescents in the United States experiences at least one potentially traumatic event before the age of 16. Trauma increases the risk of developing substance abuse, and substance abuse increases the likelihood of being re-traumatized by engaging in high-risk behavior such as gun violence. We realize the widespread impact of trauma and understand its potential paths for youth recovery. Until recently, youth have gone underrepresented, unheard, and unacknowledged when it comes to trauma. But due to the high rates in youth maladaptive behaviors, such as community violence, it's become apparent that we can no longer turn a blind eye to the become apparent that we can no longer turn a blind eye to the, to the root causes of physical, psychological, and spiritual trauma. Trauma Survivors Heal Two provides a safe environment using a trauma-informed lens with eight and 12-week evidence-based curriculums that addresses the impact of trauma on our youth. We provide individualizing group therapy sessions that allows the youth to have a choice and a voice, learn coping skills, strategies, and therapeutic techniques that will inspire, engage, and empower them to build insight, learn to manage their emotions in a sustainable way, and tap into their own strengths and resilience while eliminating traditional mental health systemic barriers of healthy lifestyle changes. By individualizing each client's treatment plan, we work together collaboratively to promote trauma healing by using cognitive behavior therapy, life skills, expressive arts, emotional regulation, identifying triggers, and developing a safe place by using mindfulness meditation. And through peer-to-peer support, clients can build healthy self-esteem, feel worthy of a brighter future, and set goals and values that they can achieve, developing the ability to make a difference in their lives and the community they live in. They find solutions to work through their anxiety and depression rooted from traumatic stress events. Trauma Survivors Heal Two, our project would be, hmm, okay. Okay, let's go to question three. Why are you confident that you can use the funds in accordance with federal guidelines and achieve demonstrable results in the required time? As I mentioned previously, currently funded by an incubator grant through the state as well as, we will hire a grant manager that would keep us kind of compliant, make sure that we're in compliance with any regulations that may be required. And in addition, with my personal experiences, including being certified by the State of Illinois as an alcohol and other drug counselor for 15 years, in that capacity, I will afford the opportunity to develop and implement a pilot outpatient program for Prairie Center in Champaign, Illinois that require reports to several agencies such as TASK, DCFS, parole and probation. I was responsible for tracking the available hours for services and filling out quarterly reports on budgeting expenses. 2019, I was a grantee for the Arts and Culture Grant Program with Urbana, Illinois during the COVID and was able to produce several events, including a series called Can You Hear Me Now for youth, adults, and elderly as we were confined in our homes. I was still able to go above and beyond my proposed project activities that included being co-sponsored by the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center, doing programs and events through live streaming on Facebook and WRFU, one of 4.5 FM radio, while staying, staying the given, staying within the given budget as well as using my own money and gave a PowerPoint presentation to the committee and the financial documentation.
Ms. Sherman, your, your time's up for the presentation. We'll go on to questions. Thank you.
Uh, Sharice.
Hi. I guess my question, my main question is, right now you're working out of the IMC building?
No, ma'am. I actually, Trauma Survivors Heal Two is actually, has the lower level of Lincoln Square Mall. We've been there since July and.
Lincoln Square?
Pardon me?
You said Lincoln Square?
Lincoln Square Mall.
Okay.
But I have done work and events through the IMC.
Okay. That's the only question, I can only ask.
How many children or clients have you served or are you serving now? And you're asking for 300,000. What, what will the impact of that be on your ability to, are you serving more people or expanding the types of services for the ones that you're serving?
Well, we'd like to expand the services because right now they're part-time and we'd like to go full-time and add more clients.
And how many clients do you have?
We will be starting our first project, Trauma Support Facilitated Group, in January 10th and our Grief and Loss Support Group that is facilitated, which of course, like I said, all of our stuff is evidence-based and a curriculum, eight to 12-week curriculum. So the turnover for that could be into the hundreds because of the timeframe that, the curriculum is.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk a little bit more about what, what is, what is the specific use of these funds? Is it, you said, is it just staffing? Is it to cover other costs associated with the program?
Okay, so it's for staffing, it's for training, program training, it's for, so some of our families, when we talk about community violence, their homes are shot and, shot into and they are afraid and they don't have a safe place. And so we want to use some of those funds to place them in a hotel for a couple of days while they find alternative living, as well as working with the regional planning for the vouchers for a longer-term solution. The funding is also for the youth to do recreational activities outside of the Champaign-Urbana area, like go to colleges, visit colleges and zoos and different things that perhaps they ordinarily wouldn't have the opportunity to do.
I would just like to get some clarity on your funding request. We have 300,000 here, but in your project budget, it says 150,000.
Okay, so that, what that meant was 150,000 per year and that was for two years for the 300,000?
Okay.
I was wondering if you could explain, saying that you're the only trauma-informed therapeutic program and grief support program for young adults, of what makes you unique? And are you interested in partnering with any other organizations?
Okay, so could you repeat that question because I?
Of what makes you unique? You said you're the only one doing this. What makes this organization unique to others?
Okay, so although there are programs for the youth and they have the mental health services, because we are a trauma-informed organization, we, safety is our issue and not re-traumatizing other clients, even our staff, everyone that comes to our door, we believe has had at least one traumatic event. And so we have to take care of our staff as well. However, the, the uniqueness of it is that it's all encompassed in one facility, right? And we do not have that. And it's something that we definitely need here in Urbana.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Do you have a current relationship with the school district? For the, to find clients?
That is supposed to be our referrals, one of our referral sources. I have a meeting after the first of the year with the principal at the high school.
I was just wanting to expand on Diane's question. You had mentioned that there's, you're going to be starting some groups in January. Have you already conducted some groups? And if so, how many people were involved in those groups? You said grief and.
Okay, so basically, the facility in the mall was a warehouse. And so we had to put it, get it together, right? So now we're ready to service clients. But because of my background and, like I said, substance abuse, I'm well aware of trauma and, and some of the other educational background that I have as well, working with mental health at the Pavilion and.
Unfortunately, your time is up, but that's a question you could follow up on, that council could follow up on with you.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Adverse Childhood Experience ACES, Reducing Gun Violence Through Community Trauma-Informed Care.
Hello, City Council, I'm Mayor Marlin. My name is Dr. Christopher Veal. I am a certified trauma-informed physician at Carl and I'm also a family medicine physician there as well.
Hi, Ruby Mendenhall, a professor at the University in Sociology, African-American Studies, and then also associate dean at the College of Medicine. Thank you for having us today.
2020 brought with us two pandemics. Now, we all know the one that is surrounded by COVID-19, which is one, as a physician, I'm innately well aware of. But the pandemic of the bullet is the one that has unfortunately not been given nearly enough resources or attention to. And that is something that our project is hoping to address. As a trauma-informed care physician, I see a lot. And my job is to meet people where they are. Unfortunately, our community in Urbana has seen shootings go up five times over the past five years and Champaign shootings have gone up over 37% over the past year. I have had patients who, in one specifically, who was shot accidentally. He was 28 years old and when he was seen in, in, in the emergency room, he was just given some paper and said, "Follow up later." And once the surgery team took care of him afterwards, they just sent him home, right back in the same environment that he came from. This is a person who I wound up meeting later on, but he doesn't, he didn't expect to live past 40 because his father died the same way, by gun violence. This is a cycle and this is where adverse childhood experiences come into play. Now, adverse childhood experiences, it's another word for trauma-informed care and understanding the impact, the long impact of trauma. When you experience trauma when you're young, it winds up having adverse medical consequences that ultimately people like me wind up trying to treat. But in, in culture we live in right now, we are treating the symptoms of trauma instead of healing from the trauma. And that is something that we're trying to change here with this program. Currently, we are working with the Trauma and Resilience Initiative of Champaign, which we're doing great work under Dr., under Karen Sims in our emergency departments, using the teachable moment of a violent event that lands them in the ER to begin with, as the opportunity to not only do a needs assessment, find out what they need medically and socially, but also get that follow-up care medically that is indeed trauma-informed. And so that is where we're coming from today and that is what the trauma, the ACES initiative is all about. And our colleagues as well, who are behind us.
And so to think about, like, why would this be the best use of resources? As Dr. Veal mentioned, it's a community trauma-informed approach and really focusing on prevention and healing. And also it will be deeply embedded in the community since we will, we plan to hire four community health workers and then community empowering. A lot of times, the social determinants of health include housing, lack of access to education, quality education. You heard a lot about poverty. The initiative would address those issues, adverse childhood experiences that impact health and wellness. And then also in terms of why we feel we'll be, we'll be able to work within the federal guidelines. So total, we have over 35 years of experience in communities of color, both doing research but also clinical experience. And then also experience with administering National Science Foundation grants and MacArthur grants. And then also doing publications, scholarship on adverse childhood experiences and racial trauma, right? Lot of what you see with the gun violence rooted in a lot of systemic oppression and not having access to resources. And then also, as I mentioned, part of Carl Illinois College of Medicine. So I'm really interested in social innovation and the young people to drive some of that social innovation and especially those with trauma. And so in terms of the lasting impact, this will be one of the first programs in the country, one of the long-term things Dr. Veal and others want to create, like an ACES clinic. And it'll be the first in the country and hoping to have it as a state, national, and global model. Cultural innovation, as I said, the young people will work with us to co-create many wellness tools that'll be connected to this, that'll range from the basic grounding activities to phone apps, to even housing, affordable housing. Again, when we talk about addressing social determinants of health, that's a critical part of it. And then another important part is generational healing. Many people have said before that you just can't work with the young people, that you have to work with their mother, uncle, sister, brother, cousin, and all of them will be part of this initiative and the community health workers will address that as well.
Something I want to emphasize is something she has said, which is crossing generations. Trauma is intergenerational and that's something I am inherently aware of from my own, my own, my own position as a physician. What we are trying, this is the first step in what we're trying to do long-term, which is create a trauma-informed care center, which is a medical center that is outpatient medicine that has, that also has all the resources, at least all the connections to resources that are already in our community. And what we're trying to do, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're trying to utilize what we already have while also addressing and recognizing the severe impact trauma has on one's overall medical health. It's revolutionary, long-term, what we're trying to do, but we need to first, we need to have this first start. And I'm welcoming any questions. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you.
You mentioned an ACES clinic or trauma-informed care center. Is that a physical location and are you basing it at the hospital? What is the plan? I was having trouble understanding exactly what you want to do with this $400,000.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is phase one. This is overall, our long-term goal here is to create a trauma-informed care center that is centered on addressing the medical issues that are, that, that come, arise from adverse childhood experiences and trauma in general. This first step, this funding is going specifically for our, our work that we're currently doing in the emergency department, which is meeting the victims of trauma where they are, using that teachable moment and helping to connect them with the resources they need and helping to get them that outpatient follow-up services from a medical and a social perspective that they need as well. Does that clarify?
Did you say that the center is at Carl ER?
So the center does not exist yet. As of right now, the funding we're asking for right now, we are, yes, we are centered on the ED at Carl, but we're kind of, we're not necessarily, we're at Carl specifically, we're, we're working with Carl. We use their ED, their trauma center more than anything else, but we are not Carl specifically.
Right, and Karen Sims, right from TRI, is doing work around families who have that exposure to trauma on an inpatient basis, but often when it comes time to have them discharged, as the story was told. The resources aren't there. So in many ways, this is supporting the work that TRI is doing in expanding their capacity to be able to serve the community.
Ultimately, one day, we, we hope to, and I assume, we hope to have an actual, physical outpatient clinic to, to address these outpatient concerns. But right now, we're working with the network of trauma-informed care physicians we have in the community.
Thank you.
So, yeah, can you clarify a little bit what with phase one you were wanting to do? You're talking about that kind of as folks are leaving, the outpatient piece, but you also talked about housing, you talked about a lot of different pieces, a lot of, we've heard about from other applicants as well who are doing similar work. So could you just explain?
Yeah, it's a reasonable question. I mean, I, I think it's important to understand how what makes us different, right? So we are meeting patients, the, the big thing here is using a teachable moment, right? So someone gets shot, they're in the emergency department as a result of that and there, and there is, there is a moment where they realize that what they are doing, what they're living in right now is not working. It's, it's, it's causing basically a life of misery, right? We're using that moment, we're using our community health workers who have the street cred to actually be able to talk and communicate with, with, with these patients without sounding patriarchal and actually help, help them, help understand what they need, give them the resources that they, they do need, connect them with the providers and the resources that they actually need and, and also help follow up with them. And one of the biggest things that we struggle with in the hospital setting is that outpatient follow-up with people, with victims of trauma. Oftentimes, they leave the ED and they do not follow up because one, they don't have a provider who they actually trust, and two, they have no confidence that what they're actually going to get. actually going to get is actually going to help them. That's what we hope to actually change. And this is really something that, you know, we, you know, they're already starting, they're already working with the Trauma and Resilience Initiative, but this is something that we're actually trying to really, not only expand, but to really nurture and help improve.
And I would say phase one is the year one with the community health workers following individuals, but in terms of the long-term and the lasting impact, again, is to address many of those root causes and to really create healing and sustainable change. That's the more lasting part, and that part is currently being funded from other sources.
So to clarify, you'll have four community health workers who will be stationed at the hospital, and if, if and when a gun violence victim comes in, they're not admitted to the hospital, they're discharged, but they'll speak with your caseworkers to try to figure out what's going on in their lives that they were, they ended up in this situation. And so the caseworker will try to work with them to not repeat the violence or perpetuate the violence, that's the goal.
Trying to break that cycle between the ACES and the, and the long-term outcomes, right? Trying to break that cycle. Yeah.
We mostly hear ACES for children, like there are ACES for adults.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So these children grew up, right? You know, the ACES, you know, they are, it's kind of a synonym for trauma-informed care or developmental trauma, right? So, you know, you have these traumatic experiences happen. Long-term, those experiences, whether it's the environment they are raised in, or the coping mechanisms that you develop or fail to develop, they lead to adverse health outcomes later on. And then ultimately, you know, from what I understand, you know, I always use a quote by Maya Angelou, "When you know better, you do better," right? If you don't know any better, you can't expect to do any better, and you're just going to re-traumatize the next generation. What we're trying to do with the Trauma-Informed Care Center, with the ACES initiative, is we're trying to, trying to break that cycle, and we're trying to actually give them that information and that change that they need to actually, you know, instead of just treating the symptoms of trauma, actually healing from the trauma and creating a different life. Sorry, I didn't get to all the questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the last project for tonight, unfortunately, the representatives from Crime Stoppers were ill, could not attend, but they did send in a statement and asked it to be read. If it's okay with the council, we'll read it within the six-minute period, and then we'll call it a night. Is that okay? Okay. And then he'll send it around so you can do it.
My name is Dawn Coyne Trimble, and I'm the vice president of Champaign County Crime Stoppers. Our organization has been assisting law enforcement with collecting anonymous tips on crime in this community for thirty-six years. We are an all-citizen volunteer board with no paid staff. We are honored to partner with the community, media, and law enforcement in Champaign County to help keep our community safe for over thirty-six years.
Slow down. I really cannot understand some of the stuff.
Our primary mission is to provide an avenue for individuals to give information to police and remain completely anonymous. Through donations and board-organized fundraising, we can provide cash rewards to tipsters who give information that leads to the arrest of someone involved in a crime in Champaign County. Since inception, thirty-six years ago, we have received twenty-five thousand tips, which have helped law enforcement make over eighteen hundred arrests and recover property and drugs totaling over one point nine million dollars. This has resulted in a hundred and seventy-four thousand in rewards approved for tipsters, all while keeping them completely anonymous through the process. In January two thousand nineteen, after seeing an increase in gun violence in our community, we researched a program other Crime Stoppers organizations have successful, have had success with called Illegal Gun Bounty Reward Program. After careful consideration, we chose to implement this program and offer our max reward of one thousand to anyone that gave information leading to the arrest of someone that used a gun in the commission of a felony crime in Champaign County. From two thousand nineteen to March, through March of two thousand twenty-two, we were able to take anonymous tips that helped law enforcement arrest forty-two people and take fifty-five firearms off the streets of our community. With this program alone, our board approved thirty-six thousand in rewards to be paid out to tipsters from January two thousand nineteen through March two thousand twenty-two. In September two thousand one, we received four tips within the Illegal Gun Bounty Reward Program that helped law enforcement take eighteen guns off our streets in just one month. While this was seemingly impressive, gun crime was still on the rise. In September of two thousand twenty-one, a few of our board members traveled to Omaha for the Crime Stoppers USA Training Conference. At this conference, the Omaha Crime Stoppers Program highlighted how they had increased the reward amount considerably and then saw significant change in the level of crime in their community. In other words, while the rewards for information went up, the arrests went up as well, and the homicides and gun crime went down. We felt this could work in our community. With already established Illegal Gun Bounty Reward Program, we had seen success, and we believed that by increasing the reward for the program, we might match the success that Omaha had achieved in reducing gun-related crimes. In March of two thousand twenty-two, after careful consideration by our board and financial support from the City of Champaign-Arpa Funding, we were able to increase our reward program to tipsters specifically related to the Illegal Gun Bounty Reward Program. We were able to increase those rewards from one thousand to twenty-five hundred for information leading to the arrest of anyone who used a gun in the commission of a felony crime, and from one thousand to five thousand for information leading to the arrest of anyone who had been involved in committing a homicide in Champaign County. Since March of two thousand twenty-two, we have approved fourteen Illegal Gun Bounty Reward Program cash rewards at twenty-five hundred each, and we also have approved two rewards relating to information that led to the arrest of two homicide suspects in Champaign County at five thousand each. In total, since the Illegal Gun Bounty Program has been operating in Champaign County, almost a total of four years, we have had anonymous tips received that helped law enforcement arrest sixty-two individuals and recover seventy-four illegal guns from the streets of Champaign County and arrest two homicide suspects. The specific program allowed us to see a large increase in tips taken through our program, about six hundred percent in the first year, and a large increase in weapons seized from our streets, a hundred and fifty percent increase. Members of the community have three ways to get information to Crime Stoppers: phone call at two-one-seven-three-seven-three-tips, our website, three-seven-three-tips.com, or by using our free mobile app, P3 Tips. The technology we use scrubs all identifying information and allows us to guarantee anonymous to all tipsters that are providing information. The mobile app also allows for the anonymous uploading of photos and videos, which has been extremely helpful for law enforcement. We maintain the anonymity, even as tipsters are picking up their cash reward. Tipsters are identified only by number, and we have no way of even knowing the tipster's name. We do not want to deter anyone from going directly to law enforcement with information. However, we realize that many have a hesitancy to open and share some information, whether it's fear of retaliation or not wanting to testify in court. Crime Stoppers provides an avenue for this information to still be conveyed to law enforcement. Champaign County Crime Stoppers cares deeply about this community and its safety of its residents, which is why we are asking for your consideration for a portion of the ARPA funds provided to the City of Urbana. With these funds, we could sustain the Illegal Gun Bounty Enhanced Rewards Program through the year two thousand twenty-six. We provide a unique and vital service to our community members and law enforcement. We absolutely want to be part of the solution towards reducing crime in our neighborhoods. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's presentations. We again thank all the applicants. We'll do the final twelve presentations tomorrow night.
Can I make a motion, Mayor?
I would entertain a motion to continue the meeting.
Yes, I make a motion since I will not be here tomorrow so that everybody can continue the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This meeting will be continued to seven PM Thursday, December fifteenth, in these chambers at seven PM.